I'd like to call the March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five Planning Commission regular meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and follow the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Hickey?
Present.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
I am here, and I will note for the record that Commissioner Hamm is absent, and we are joined today on the staff side by Community Development Director David Loyah.
Yeah, and I'll also note that Commissioner Simmons is also absent.
As well as Commissioner Simmons, thank you. Of course. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes, three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. I see there's no one here in the gallery. Is there anyone wishing to join us online?
We do have one person online, but they're not raising their hand.
Okay, if there's someone out there in digital world that would like to make a comment, now's your moment. Seeing none, I will move on to our consent calendar. We have one item on consent this evening, which is to approve Planning Commission minutes for our regular meeting, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. Would any commissioner like to pull this item for discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion. Anyone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second. Thanks, team. Moving on now, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move-
I'm sorry, Chair, can we take a vote on that? And just for those who are absent, you're able to vote on accepting the minutes into the record. You don't have to have been there.
Okay, sorry, I skipped over that. Apologies. Dialing back a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. Thank you. Locking in. Consent calendar. Got through that, check. We're on to public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening, so our business item, which is next, is our only item this evening, is to consider the city's local coastal element and provide direction as necessary. Can we begin with a staff report?
Yeah, good evening, Commission. This topic apparently was a huge crowd draw, but we will go through the local coastal program update. I'm going to give you a little bit of history on it and kind of try and describe to you the the processes that we see and sort of some of the benefits, the way we're approaching local coastal programs tonight. The idea here is really just to roll this out. As you'll see as we go through the presentation, there's been quite a bit of public engagement that's already gone into this document. I feel like it's a very good, close to final draft. But certainly, as we go through the process, you know, the commission will have the discretion to provide comment. Before I jump into this presentation, I did want to note that you received an email from Colin Fist with CRTP asking for us to address transportation, specifically parking in the coastal zone. I can address that if you'd like, but I'm going to try and get through the presentation fairly quickly and then allow you to kind of guide where we go from there. Okay, so let's see. Whoops, wrong computer. So I just want to touch base on the work to date. The comprehensive update of the local coastal program is literally a twenty-five-year process to date. Our current local coastal program, the element, was adopted in nineteen eighty-nine, and the zoning was adopted in nineteen ninety-four. And that's the document that we're currently using here in two thousand and twenty-five to regulate land use and development in the coastal zone. So I put an image of the actual document here. You could see it's, you know, a typed document. This was hand typed. That's how old this thing is. So it's time to update it. You're probably asking yourself, well, why haven't we done so? The general plan update in two thousand was our first opportunity to submit to the Coastal Commission for an update to what we referred to as our land use plan. At that time, we were submitting the entire general plan and saying, here's our land use plan for for your consideration. And we had these cute little wave symbols to indicate which policies specifically identified as coastal policies, but the idea was they were going to certify our entire general plan. At that time, Coastal Commission staff said, well, why don't you wait until you have the zoning ordinance as well, and we'll just do the whole thing. So we waited, and we spent another eight years until our land use code was adopted. And that was a great moment in in Arcata's planning history. We had brand-new general plan and brand-new land use code. So we went back and started working with the Coastal Commission to submit an an update, comprehensive update, to our local coastal program. We went to through the entire process. It took us four years. By two thousand and twelve, we were ready for Coastal Commission certification. When we went to certification, there were some some challenges, and at that time, the city council decided that they would not accept the Coastal Commission certification. The way the process works is we go through our local process. Once we've adopted those plans locally, we submit to the Coastal Commission. They then go through their state process, and they typically conditionally certify a an LCP. That means that they've got conditions that they want us to adopt back into our LCP before we have a fully certified local coastal program. So this conditional certification in two thousand and twelve was rejected by the then council, and we started working on a new update in two thousand and fourteen. We received support from the Coastal Commission and local coastal program grants in two thousand and fifteen. That led to some background documents, existing conditions, some sea level rise vulnerability assessments, and those have all been adopted. In two thousand and eighteen, we received another Coastal Commission grant, and that went largely to do the work that you're going to see tonight. In two thousand and twenty-two, the grant was awarded to do finalized work on the zoning ordinance and then also to prepare the the application materials for Coastal Commission. So we are as close as we've ever been in my career, except for in two thousand and twelve, when we thought we were across the finish line, to having an adopted local coastal program. The one thing that's changed dramatically between the two thousand and twelve attempt and the current attempt is that Coastal Commission staff has been working really closely with the city of Arcata staff. There's been a lot of work done on sea level rise since that time, and in a lot of ways, it was a blessing in disguise that we didn't update our local coastal program in two thousand and twelve, in part because in two thousand and twelve, we were literally giving the Coastal Commission the entire land use code, the entire general plan, and saying, we want to certify all of this, even though there's a large component of those documents that have really nothing to do with the coastal zone. And so what my recommendation was in our two thousand and fourteen update was to take a completely different tack. I'm going to explain that tack to you tonight. This is something that the city council and prior commissions has already bought off on. They said, yes, let's definitely do it that way. I'm describing it here for you tonight so that, you know, we can all get on the same page. We all are operating on a level set with with what these documents do for us. So, you know, I mentioned that we've done a lot of work on this dating back literally to, you know, the early two thousands, but the current effort, you know, really, the efforts began in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. Through two thousand and sixteen, we had, you know, a bunch of meetings on sea level rise. That was followed in two thousand and seventeen by a bunch of tabling events on the public, really doing a lot of legwork through that mid mid-teens to, you know, to get a lot of input on the documents. And then between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen, we had several Planning Commission's city council study sessions. This was a topic every single year. We haven't done so in the last couple of years, just because we've had a little bit of gap in activity, but I anticipate this current year's study session to focus on this again, because, again, we're going to be trying to submit this year. Between twenty-one and twenty-two, we had six Planning Commission meetings on this topic. We've really hammered this pretty hard in the past. Tons of other work, and then notably in two thousand and twenty-four, our general plan and gateway area plan were adopted. Previously, we thought that, you know, there'd be a gap that we'd have our local coastal program done before that general plan was done, and that we were going to have to circle back around and and work on, you know, updating the local coastal program based on those those new documents. As it turns out, we have them completed first, and so we're incorporating all of that into our local coastal program application. So yes, the public has seen this before quite extensively. Lots of public comment. Moving forward, and and casting backwards just a little bit, twenty-three to twenty-four early, we had additional public input on the documents. In twenty-five, early, we're going to be doing the reorientation. That's what we're doing right now, getting familiarized with the the documents again. In mid-twenty-five, we're anticipating the Planning Commission and the city council will have formal hearings on this document, and that you'll be approving it for submission to the Coastal Commission in late twenty-five. Hopefully, by late, I mean fall. And then by twenty-six, early twenty-six, it will be approved and effective, and we can start implementing it. Okay, so that's that's the process to date. I'm going to take a pause button, hit the pause button real quick, and see if anybody has questions about what we've done to date or what we're trying to do today.
David, can I just, oh, sorry?
Oh, no, just a quick. So, David, if I understood that history correctly, the last time that the climate projections and that bit of the analysis was done, was that in two thousand and fifteen, or was it done again after?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. The vulnerability analyses were done in two thousand and twenty fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. I think they were ultimately adopted in two thousand and eighteen. And a lot of the vulnerability assessment, we we were taking the position at that time that approaching it from the standpoint of, at what date is the sea level elevation going to be elevation X? Because the projections were changing, like, as soon as you wrote something in and adopted it, the projections were changing again. So at that time, we really took a different approach. Arcata is known for taking different approaches. And so what we did was, we did talk about what the projections were based on, the the time projections, what they were based on in the current available science. But we keyed all of our vulnerability assessments to elevations of sea level, so that regardless of when it was happening, we knew that this asset was vulnerable at date or at sea level X. And then we could use that to do adaptation planning based on the elevation of the water, not based on what the timeframes were. We have recent work that we're doing on adaptation planning that incorporates the Ocean Protection Council's current projections, which are, for the first time in my career, a lot lower than what they they have been in the past. And so we actually, at least on the beginning portions of the the timeframe, have a little bit more time to to plan and and address sea level rise. You know, the projections still go up ultimately to, you know, about a meter or so of of sea level rise over the course of the next, you know, hundred to a hundred and fifty years. So we just have a little bit more time to to land into it.
David, could you share these slides with us? That would be awful.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. And about the OPC projections of sea level rise?
Mm-hmm.
Have, are we settling on one of those scenarios? And and what's our planning horizon?
Yeah. If 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 I could come back to that in brief after the presentation, and then also if I could ask us to put a pin in a deep dive on sea level rise, because we've done that a couple of times, and I I don't have the slides available right now to go into that. And and so I'd really like to be able to, I know a lot of people are really interested in sea level rise, and I'd like to dedicate time specifically to that topic. But I can address it in brief. Any other quick questions? Okay, moving on. So Arcata's coastal zone, I'm going to take this one step at a time. The red boundary, and and I apologize if there are red, red, blue, green colorblind folks out there, because those are the only three colors on this map. But the red boundary, you see, is the city's boundary. The blue line is the coastal zone, a representation of it. And I've kind of put some street names in there so you can get a sense for where where those boundaries are. There's a, you know, fairly small proportion of Arcata's built environment that's actually in the coastal zone. You can see the, you know, Samoa Boulevard. Here's our gateway area, Beryl District, South Samoan on G Street. That's really the densest area that's in the coastal zone that's built up. We have a little bit of development around Spear and Alliance here. And then that's that's largely what we're dealing with in our boundaries, and you'll get you'll get a closer look at that. But it's it's of interest to note that most of our built environment, most of where we're planning for development, is outside the coastal zone. The local coastal program will only regulate land use in the coastal zone. It's important to keep that in mind. This was one of the critical inflection points in two thousand and twelve, and we decided to go a different way. Instead of giving our entire zoning ordinance and saying, certify this as our 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 local coastal program, because we're talking about a a small proportion of the city that's actually regulated, we decided to do it to do something completely different, have a completely separate document that regulates development in the coastal zone. It's specific to that. The policies and the zoning ordinances that don't affect coastal resources, that aren't affected by certification, are still applicable citywide, but we wanted to carve out those policies and zoning ordinances and implementation measures that enact the coastal act so that they can be viewed separately. And I'll get into a little bit more detail about why we did that, but it's largely because there's a very small area that's actually affected by this document. So it doesn't affect areas in the coastal zone, or outside the coastal zone, rather. This is, just to orient you, because I shifted gears here, I'm showing you a hand-drawn map from back in the the seventies. Here's downtown where this little star is. This stark black line is, again, a representation of the coastal zone boundary. And the reason I'm showing this is because I want you to get a sense, again, for how much of the area is affected by local coastal program. The inland zone is not. It's blacked out. It's not part of the coastal zone. There's a huge portion that is retained jurisdiction. This is Coastal Commission jurisdiction, where permits are issued by the Coastal Commission. The city doesn't play in that field. And it's really only these areas where the city's local coastal program has an impact. Coastal Commission, another nuance here is the Coastal Commission doesn't use the city's LCP to issue coastal development permits in their retained jurisdiction. They do make reference to it, because when they're making findings, they want to know, what is the local jurisdiction? You know, what do they think about this? But ultimately, they're basing their permits on the coastal act. And so the LCP is helpful in informing the Coastal Commission. These are our desires. But the Coastal Commission doesn't open up our LCP and say, okay, well, now we need to use these policies and procedures to issue a permit, if if they're issuing a permit in the retained jurisdiction.
So the, it is the Coastal Commission that, for example, does all the permitting for the wastewater treatment?
Absolutely. The city does not issue permits for the wastewater treatment plant because it's in this blacked-out zone down here. Similarly, and interestingly, I'll take a moment to make a point about sea level rise, is that you'll note that all of the areas where we might want to do a project that has anything to do with adaptation with sea level rise is all in the Coastal Commission's retained jurisdiction. And so all of the policy work that we do locally here, we're putting forward to the Coastal Commission what we believe is the right approach for the city of Arcata. But any project that actually goes to implement that right approach for the city of Arcata is going to be permitted by the Coastal Commission, not by the city of Arcata. So that's an important thing to keep in mind.
Only in that darkening area, though, right?
Well, that's where the projects would happen. We're not likely to be, I mean, unless we're planning for way out into the future, we're not likely to spend money to, for example, armor Samoa Boulevard, because that's not where the water is. The water is over here in this blacked-out zone around these areas that are retained by the Coastal Commission. So if we wanted to do a living shoreline, we wouldn't be issuing that permit. We could say in our policy documents all day long, we believe that living shorelines are the best approach to adaptation for the city of Arcata for sea level rise. If the Coastal Commission doesn't agree, we won't get a permit.
David, you're talking about Public Works projects there, right?
Primarily Public Works projects, yeah.
Everything south.
Yep. I will say that the Coastal Commission and the local government's working group that was a combination of Coastal Commission staff and a couple of coastal cities has made a lot of progress in in developing policies that I would say are, you know, really cognizant of the the impacts at the local scale. And so I'm hopeful that by delaying twenty-five years, we've actually made our our application at just the right time to have a very good conversation around sea level rise adaptation. And we can talk more about that when we get into those topics as well. Okay, so then, what this is representing, again, the blue line is the coastal zone boundary. The, you're already focused on the areas that are south and west of that boundary, or the areas that are affected by the coastal zone, but I'm showing you the two thousand and forty-five land uses that were adopted. These are what we're going to be submitting for Coastal Commission's review. And so you'll recall the gateway area here, which you can now see pretty prominently with the- with the brown designated mixed-use zoning as the base zoning. A portion of that is in the coastal zone. And this will be going forward as part of our application to have them certify the gateway area. All of the other zones in this area, you know, have been updated and modified as well. So that's exciting. That's all the work that we did over the last eight years to update this is now being rolled into, and for the first time in probably, well, since 2008, for the first time since 2008, we will have consistent zoning, no matter which side of the street you're standing on, when you're on the coastal zone boundary. Okay, so here's where we get into sort of the nitty-gritty planning details about what our approach is. Now, I just showed you the base zoning map. And as you'll recall, with the gateway area plan, we have a base zoning that's mixed-use, and that allows for a whole variety of different kinds of uses. And then we had overlay zones that identify the Beryl District, or the Gateway Corridor, the Gateway Neighborhood. Those overlays have policies and zoning that are specific to just that overlay. We're taking a similar approach with the coastal zoning. So if you look at the property, it's going to have base zoning. And maybe that base zoning is, for example, residential low-density. And then it's going to have an overlay in the coastal zone. So the entire coastal zoning is going to be overlay zoning. So you might have residential low-density property that has an overlay in the coastal zone of coastal residential low. You may be saying, well, why would we do that? The answer is, again, with the coastal zoning, we only want to address what's absolutely necessary to address compliance with the coastal act, consistency with the coastal act. And so that overlay will do that and just that. We may have other standards in the zoning district that we want to apply as well. Maybe it's fluorure ratio. Maybe we're really concerned about regulating fluorure ratio. But we've decided that fluorure ratio doesn't, in fact, have an impact in the coastal zone, on coastal resources. And so the overlay zone won't tell you what the fluorure ratio is, but the underlying zoning will tell you what the fluorure ratio is. So we have multiple tools in our toolbox to be able to regulate development, some of which are certified and codified in the coastal zone. So what does this look like? This is table 2-1 out of the coastal land use element. That's the document that you have in your attachment today. This is basically the policy document. Now, I'm not going to get into the minutia about how, the differences between how coastal commission looks at the land use plan versus how we look at the land use plan. But I'll say this as a short form of how we're looking at it. The local coastal element is going to be an element of the general plan that further defines policy development only in the coastal zone. So I've just showed you where our coastal zone boundary is. I've just showed you where the coastal commission's retained jurisdiction is. I've just showed you where these documents are really and truly only going to have effect in terms of the city's ability to implement these documents in that very small area that was left over. That's what this element really addresses. So here are the coastal zone overlay districts. They'll map onto the districts that we already have. So, for example, we have a coastal resource in open space lands. This would map onto our open space and public facility lands, I'm sorry, our open space lands that are in the underlying zoning district. Just below that, you have the coastal agricultural. So you're gonna have agricultural, maybe it's agricultural exclusive. You'll have a coastal agricultural overlay on top of it if you're in the coastal zone. And we'll have policies and standards that apply only to that. So you're getting the hang of this here. Overlay zones that lay over and mirror the underlying zones that are in our existing zoning designations. Okay, so then I want to throw in one more nuance. And the reason I want to do this is because this starts to speak to how do we actually implement these? So I've told you, we have these zoning districts that have underlying zoning, and then they have this combining zone or an overlay zone. We have a lot of new tools that we're putting into our local coastal program as well. And one of the tools has to do with this categorical exclusion area. Now, we've got a categorical exclusion area that is tied to the 1989 local coastal program. It was based on, you know, the zoning designations, the configurations of parcels, et cetera, at the time it was adopted. I believe the coastal commission is going to tell us that catex order is no longer applicable once you update your coastal zoning. This is a very powerful tool, however, for permitting in the coastal zone, because one of the critical components to it is that land uses that are principally permitted do not require a coastal development permit in this catex area. So if you are only required to get a building permit and you're in the coastal zone, if you're in the categorical exclusion area, all you need is a building permit. If you're outside the categorical exclusion area, you also need to get a coastal development permit. So for a time, when this catex order is no longer valid, no longer effective, because the documents that it ties to have been superseded by our local coastal program update, we're going to lose the power of the categorical exclusion area. We will be working with our coastal staff to, as quickly as possible, recertify a categorical exclusion area that maps onto the current policies and programs in our LCP. But there's going to be a time when we won't have it.
David, that finger that goes north towards downtown?
This one?
Why is that coastal commission jurisdiction?
This is Butcher Slough, and they retain jurisdiction around tidal waters. And so we don't have jurisdiction there.
Are there zero residential properties in that little finger?
No, there's a ton of, everything that's on South G Street that faces onto Butcher Slough is in the retained jurisdiction.
That's a number of houses.
Fair number, yeah. Lots of businesses.
Including my apartment.
Sagan?
My apartment's in that zone.
Yes.
Yes.
And a lot of the area that is in the Zone 1 for our sea level rise, that's all this South G Street area down here. So this is all in the coastal commission's retained jurisdiction. When these landowners come forward and ask the city for a permit, we have to send them to the coastal commission to get a coastal development permit.
So everybody on South G, on the west side of the road there, if they want to do a remodel or anything like that, they come for a permit to you, and you say, go talk to the coastal commission first?
Yeah, and that's accurate. And the coastal commission has a great tool called a waiver, which allows them to look at a project, and if it has de minimis impacts on coastal resources, they can issue a waiver for a coastal development permit. There's still some process associated with it, so it's not like an over-the-counter kind of a permit. But it's a lot more streamlined than having to get a coastal development permit. That's one of the tools that we're incorporating into our LCP as well, is that we'll have a waiver process. So super slick tool for projects that really have no impact on coastal resources, aren't in the categorical exclusion area. And, you know, we can streamline the permitting a little bit. That's one of the tools that we'll be using in this interim when we don't have a categorical exclusion area, in fact, is that we can issue waivers for projects that are de minimis. The basis for the categorical exclusion area is that these are all lands, so the categorical exclusion area is, it's getting hard to say over and over again, includes all of these grayed-out areas here. You can see that these map onto well-developed urban areas already. And so the coastal commission basically said, look, these areas are urbanized. There's no coastal resources in these areas. You should have a streamlined permit process for these areas. If it's a principally permitted activity, you know, go ahead, go straight to building permit. So we'll be working to reapply these categorical exclusion areas with the new LCP. But we're also, with the adoption of the LCP, will have a waiver process that can do, you know, similar work that the categorical exclusion area can do.
I didn't see mention of that in this document.
I will see if I can find reference to that, but that is something that is in the coastal zoning ordinance. So it's more explicitly defined in the coastal zoning ordinance. The coastal zoning ordinance is where you get all the standards and procedures. This document is telling us more of the policy level, and then there are certain programs, if you will, that need to be implemented to ensure compliance with the coastal act that are also in this document.
So overall, this is a simple process with very easy-to-understand layers of zoning and
Exactly.
pretty self-evident.
Exactly.
Okay.
We're trying to simplify it as much as humanly possible. It is very complex, but we're trying to streamline our processes as well. Okay, so I just wanted to kind of circle back. This is the area that's in the catex, it's in the coastal zone, it's in the gateway area. So I wanted to make the connection for us here and take a slightly closer look at this. This is one of the reasons why we wanted to include this as part of the gateway area, because it's already sort of determined that this portion of the gateway area is urbanized and principally permitted uses should be permitted without coastal development permits. So that's basically this area here of the gateway area. You can see the two blocks, because again, this is the portion that is retained because of Butcher Slough. So this is in the coastal commission's retained jurisdiction here. So in these areas, basically, if it's a principally permitted use, it doesn't require a coastal development permit. That maps exactly onto the work that we did in the gateway area, making all of those uses and building types and development projects principally permitted. So you're asking yourself, well, we said that you could do a seven-story building principally permitted in here. What does that require a coastal development permit? The answer ultimately, our hope, is that the coastal commission will recertify this categorical exclusion area, and the answer will be, no. It doesn't require coastal development permit, it's principally permitted. It's envisioned in the permitting. We did the environmental impact report to address all the environmental impacts, you know, apart for some very specific conditions, like wetlands and/or soil contamination. If you don't have any of those issues, and you're trying to build consistent with the gateway area plan in this area, you should be able to go and just get a building permit. So that's another component to the streamlining that we've built into this planning process over the years.
So the assumption is that by them certifying, that they've done their homework on our zoning ordinances for these areas? And if they have a problem, they're going to bring it up before they certify?
Absolutely, yeah. And so we want to make sure that we give them all of the information that they need to feel comfortable that the projects that would be covered under that categorical exclusion order that would be principally permitted, that align with the planning work that we've done, is consistent with the coastal act. So we want to give them that information so they're comfortable with it, so they'll certify it. And then our process will still be, even though this area is in the coastal zone, it's a pretty significant proportion of the gateway area. We're putting a lot of eggs into this basket for, you know, future development. It's all in the coastal zone. And so the rationale being that, look, you've already adopted a catex order on this area. We've already accepted, these are, you know, urbanized lands. We're looking to clean these areas up and make them, you know, a vibrant part of our community. Let's hit the easy button here. You'll recall that we also had conversations about how this is, this and other areas that will be allowing for densification is a huge part of our sea level rise strategy in building out areas for businesses and homes that are in the coastal zone, that will ultimately potentially be vulnerable to sea level rise impacts, for them to be able to have a space to move and stay in Arcata.
Yeah, one of the things that I remember most clearly from some of the sea level rise studies that we did and expert panels and some of the resources we had was the slideable maps that we were able to look at that would allow you to see inundation areas. And one of the things that, for me, was most memorable is that it's not necessarily the areas that are closer to the bay that get inundated. That inundation happens more to the west and then moves further north before it moves into the gateway area.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely, lower elevation. Last little piece that I want to touch on about zoning is this commercial, coastal commercial visitor serving, the CCV, that we are applying to pretty much the entire South G Street area. You'll recall from our conversations around sea level rise and zoning and discussions that we've had before, if you were part of those discussions, that this is another critical component to our, you know, future planning, our adaptation planning. This area that you see outlined and cross-hatched and identified as CCV is, you know, basically this area, it's not exactly, but you know, this is sort of in the center of it here, this image that you see here. And a lot of the land uses here are, you know, scrapyards, you know, we have our metal scrapyard out here, there's a lot of, you know, vehicle storage, and, you know, basically, land uses that are not so clean. Land uses that could have, you know, crankcases that are draining into the ground, you know, old diesel fuel that's draining into the ground, so on and so forth. There were former industrial uses out here. And part of our sea level rise strategy, part of our overall strategy to how do we approach land uses down here is in part through some of these creative coastal commercial visitor-serving uses that would encourage these land uses to clean up. The example I like to use is a hotel or a RV park, where they would come and revitalize this area, clean all of this up, move it to an appropriate landfill, clean the land up so that there's no hazards on it, and then put in a use that's highly adaptive to, or resilient to sea level rise. An RV park, if it floods a couple of times a year, you just close the park for those few times. When it's not flooding, you reopen it. In addition, an RV park is a very low infrastructure burden to be able to remove if you have to remove it, if sea level rise gets to the point where that land is no longer viable for economic uses, for social uses. And so there's an example of using this zoning in combination with the work that we're doing in infill areas elsewhere in the city to try and transform these uses, create spaces elsewhere in the city where these existing businesses can relocate to, so that they can remain as Arcata businesses, and transform this area in ways that both clean it up for our current users. This is, you know, a premier destination. People come from all over the world to the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary. And some of our dirtiest land uses are literally right across the street. So this has near-term benefits to encourage people to transform their land uses, move them more into commercial visitor-serving type land uses, expand on the, you know, the vibrancy that we have in our downtown, and ultimately be able to have more adaptable and resilient land uses in the future to address sea level rise. So all of these things are kind of integrated together. All of this planning work that we've been doing over the last eight years or so has resulted in this holistic, integrated approach that really tries to recognize the impacts on, you know, our existing users, create space for those existing users elsewhere in the city, and make this transformation that we want to see. So just in quick summary, the coastal zoning work that we're doing is designed to, over time, lower the intensity in the areas that are subject to sea level rise, create high return on investment uses that, you know, businesses in particular can get in there and make their return on their investment, make appropriate gains, and, you know, take that risk that's associated with being in these vulnerable areas. We're also, there are policies in the document that you'll see where we're trying to provide additional coastal resource access by developing trails, hopefully on top of berms, that will help protect this area for the long term in the perimeter around this area. And then, you know, another strategy- And then, you know, another strategy is to ensure that we're communicating the risk of sea level rise through deeds when we have access to approvals. It's as simple as just recording on title some notification that they're in an area that has been mapped as potentially vulnerable to sea level rise. When that property exchanges hands, that new owner is taking it and eyes wide open. So those are some of the strategies that we're using to help address long-term change in this area. So that's what I have for you in terms of the presentation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, happy to go into any detail that you have. I've got the policy document that I can bring up if you want to talk specific policies. But the real intent here was just a level set, everyone's understanding, get us thinking about this plan again so that we'll be ready as the summer comes on to start making decisions.
That was really my, just my main question was to reset for everyone what our goal is here. Isn't to understand and memorize all the acronyms and so on and so forth, but to really just kind of refresh as we begin taking this up yet again, but this time in hopes that we get to the finish line with this project. And associated with that is just a quick question, which is that this is a hurdle, a blocking issue for development that we've all been working for, is finalizing this LCP, correct?
Yeah, right now we have a very complex, you thought this was complex. It's even more complex, the navigating we have to do for development in the coastal zone because we're operating on, you know, 1989 code. And we also have these brand-new policy, we'll be delaying certification by that same amount of time.
Can I just ask, are we open to specific suggestions about the plan?
Sure, yeah. The, yeah, I certainly wanted to, you know, provide that opportunity with no expectation that folks have read the, you know, 100 pages or so.
I did. I have a couple. Page 25, if you want to bring it up.
Is that, oops, 25 in your packet or 25 on the numbered page?
In our packet, in the PDF.
Okay, there's, in the bottom corner of the it's around 17 or so?
Let's see. We don't want to. We just want to exclude in the city of Arcata, oil and gas exploration.
Yeah, the, you know, initially, we didn't have a policy about oil and gas development because frankly, it's just not really on the table here in Arcata. The coastal commission staff asked us to include a policy. And so we started by saying on and offshore petroleum product exploration recovery and processing is prohibited. With, again, you know, happy to reduce the number of policies that we have in here. I do think that the, I don't remember specifically where this policy came from. But, so yeah, happy to remove it, recognizing that some of these may come back as conditions that we have to adopt them. Coastal Commission is very interested in ensuring that, you know, coastal-dependent industrial is allowed. We don't have any land zone coastal industrial, coastal-dependent industrial because we just don't have that kind of coastline. So it's, I feel more comfortable about being able to get rid of this particular policy.
It's hard to know what's envisioned by hazardous industrial development. I mean, does that mean an oyster farm where there's racks hanging in the bay and boats coming in and out? Like, it's not entirely clear. Like, I could think of something much worse than that, but it could refer to something that we might be in favor of. I just don't quite understand what that encompasses.
Yeah, I can, I could do a little deeper dive on that for you for next time. But I think that this doesn't map on real closely to our zoning types because we have industrial, limited, general industrial. And there are, in our zoning code, there's further definitions of different types of manufacturing from low, moderate, and high. And I think that, you know, each of those could have hazardous components. So yeah, I think that's a valid point to
I just wouldn't want to inadvertently close off an opportunity for something that, you know, we're not talking about like cobalt manufacturing in the marsh or something.
That's what I think.
Right, but it could be something like an oyster farm, possibly, if you're, I don't know. I just would like to know before we decide to get rid of it and then have to go back and go, we just outlawed something that
Yep.
we might not have wanted to.
Do you want to further the 3.2.3, though, and as a commission suggests that the city remove it if possible?
Yes. Do we need a motion?
Or a straw poll or something?
What do you think at this end of the table about Pierce's concerns about 3.2.3?
I think it might be premature to delete it. Maybe you can, David, talk to the coastal commission when you next have a conversation about this and see if it's something they'd still like to see in the plan versus going back and forth. And also, I do have, like, I brought, thought Colin brought up some really good points, but maybe, or is it to say we're going to have another session where we can talk about specific policies we're concerned about? Okay, I think maybe if we addressed it all at once, it might make for a better conversation, but that's just me.
My interpretation of your guidance on this is that including the prohibition with the caveat is actually a stronger position against oil and gas than saying nothing at all. If that's the case, then I am for keeping it in.
Yeah, the caveat, except when otherwise allowed by Coastal Act Sections 30262 and 30263, actually allows for circumstances where you could do oil and gas. So it would be a stronger statement to eliminate that caveat and say, we just won't allow it. And I do, you know, take the recommendation to have a conversation with coastal staff on this, see if it's still an issue.
Can we, can we talk a little bit about what we think the LCP review process is going to look like from here moving forward for the Planning Commission and a joint study with the City Council? And my thoughts here is that we're all going to have things that we're concerned about, some of which you brought up, we've discussed a little bit. But I would like to have those discussions with our full team, first of all, and maybe when we can come prepared, as we have with other topics, where people are going to, everyone's got their list of, I want to talk about this. Do y'all want to talk about this? Yes, in favor? And like, do, take a more organized approach as opposed to piecemealing it? So could you talk a little bit about how you think this review process is going to flow for the PC and the joint PC/CC sessions?
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good idea, Chair. I think that the Planning Commission will be looking at this as a business item, probably for, you know, several meetings leading into about May. And I hope to bring, you know, some components of this to the City Council. I've got already, you know, meetings scheduled with a couple of committees. And so we'll be working through that sort of, you know, preliminary process up through, say, June. You'll have your study session in June and that'll be an opportunity for the Planning Commission to, you know, kind of have the conversation, explain their recommendation at that time. So my goal for this commission is that by June, by the end of May, you've basically got a really strong handle on, you know, any changes that you feel like are needed or, you know, support for the document as is, or whatever the case may be. And then in, you know, by the end of June, we're going to start having scheduled hearings. And so June, July, you're basically having hearings at the City Council and Planning Commission that we've done enough at that point with the documents to feel comfortable with them. And I think that taking a page out of the work that we did with the general plan is also a very good idea. You know, and we could talk a little bit more about this, you know, in our next meeting. I did with the, with the last agenda item on community benefits, I delivered the framework, the last framework that we were using for decision-making with the Planning Commission around the general plan. And that was a really effective strategy that we, you know, collaboratively developed, you know, to get efficient decision-making done that was also effective and gave everybody an opportunity to, you know, really make their thoughts known. And I think that would be, depending on, you know, I think we get a sense for it first. Does everybody have like 15, 20 policies that they want to talk about? Or is it really a handful? If it's a handful, maybe we can step down and do something a little less formal. But I think having that conversation at the next meeting when, you know, all commissioners will be present would be a really good approach.
And I know you, sort of, we got a portion of it. When do you anticipate that the whole thing will be out for discussion?
Yeah, we are targeting the end of April for having revised, you know, you'll see that in this draft, for instance, we left the figures out. Figures aren't ready for primetime yet. So we'll have the revised figures, we'll have this document updated with some, you know, minor work that we're doing currently to freshen it up. And then we'll also have the coastal zoning ordinance. And we expect to have that by the end of April, all of those documents. So it's, I feel like in, you know, decent condition now to start having the conversation. I wouldn't want you to wait until you have those final documents to continue discussing it.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is that June, July, we'll do a joint session and it will be a formal public hearing at some point, us alone and us with City Council. Between now and then, are we expecting that this is going to be included as a business item in a packet at one or two meetings?
Pretty regularly.
And we'll have a kind of a light chew on it again or something? Is that kind of like tonight?
Exactly, yeah. The intent tonight was really just to get the document out there. Again, it's a, you know, large document. You received it on Friday. I didn't expect anyone to have, you know, reviewed and digested it. We knew that we were going to have a couple of commissioners absent, you know, and so I wanted to give an overview on process to get people reoriented to the document. And then we'll start diving into, you know, more subject matter over the course of the next several meetings. And the idea is that you'll be having these as business items until that June meeting. At that June meeting, then you'll be having a conversation with the City Council, delivering your recommendation to them verbally. And then immediately after that meeting, we'll have some good direction. We'll know where we stand. And the idea will be then I'll start scheduling formal, noticed hearings. Your formal hearings will be a recommendation, similar to what we did with the general plan. You're going to make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council is going to adopt the document. Once they adopt the document, we can send it to the Coastal Commission for certification. After they certify, they'll send it back to us for acceptance of that certification.
And that's July, August, or something that we'll be formally adopting it or not?
Yep.
And are we, are we planning to, are you thinking that we will have this as a business item at all of our subsequent meetings?
Probably most, yeah.
Okay, so we will have ample opportunity to dig into this.
Absolutely.
I don't want to wait unduly long, as you said, for figures and other updates to get started. But I would like to have a little more time for commissioners, including those absent, to be able to make a list of things that they would like to discuss
Absolutely.
so that it's more efficient. Go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, could we maybe do a little triage on the chapters? I know that it's an element and therefore all of it is under our, you know, purview here, but it does seem like some of them are perhaps meatier, would give us more to chew on than others that have other related commissions and committees. So that would just be, my suggestion would be, given the way it's written, to chew on it a couple at a time, a couple of chapters at a time. And then my other question was, I know that several other neighboring jurisdictions are in the same place. I think Humboldt County's also been trying to get their LCP approved for a while. I don't know if there's learning or alignment or some sort of study of those other efforts that acknowledging that Arcata does its own thing, but that might be useful to commissioners in this effort.
I'm sorry to get an update on where other jurisdictions are at?
Yeah, and how they're handling maybe policies that feel unaligned or contentious.
Yeah, is there anything that might be instructive in our discussions by discussions that perhaps have already been had at other jurisdictions, county or otherwise, that are also reviewing coastal program language?
Yeah, I can try and reflect on that. I would say that the, you know, the city of Arcata is taking a pretty different tack than I've seen in most jurisdictions. So there's not really a clear model for what we're doing. There may be some good examples of other policy. The challenge is that, you know, these discussions really are kind of hyper-local. And, you know, we've worked on some, you know, collaborative efforts in the past to try and align policy across the county. And there's just really different politics in the different jurisdictions. And so what we found was, you know, largely what's working in one jurisdiction doesn't necessarily work in another. But I can, I can put some energy into, you know, bringing you examples of what other jurisdictions are doing, at least, you know, point you to, you know, those resources online so you can reflect on what they've done. But I do feel like, you know, we've, again, put decades. I've been working on this document my entire career here. You know, there's been a lot of energy that's gone into this, both the public and, you know, with the commission and the council. One thing I'm trying to avoid doing is to hit the reset button and start really exploring all over again, you know, these issues. So if there are specific things that you want me to research, you know, happy to do so. I can certainly bring, you know, what other jurisdictions are doing with oil and gas development and I'll bring back information from a conversation with the Coastal Commission staff about, you know, an update on that. But I'm on the area of having the
A lot of work and time has gone into this. Understood.
I just want to acknowledge too, it's the oldest one around, so with you, it's time for an update and that should be the priority.
David, it would help me to know what's the timeframe we're looking at for this document? I mean, are we looking 20 years into the future, 50 years into the future? And then tying that to one of the scenarios for sea level rise? I realize that that's unknown, but, you know, the OPC has made these various different scenarios. And it is helpful to think, while you're reading this, to think about where the water will be at a certain time. I realize that's hypothetical, but still, you know, how long and how deep?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that back up, Commissioner Lehman. I think, I said I would address this in brief, and so let me take the opportunity now. The sea level rise section does address our overall policy. Our adaptation planning does take into consideration the, you know, the current projections. These documents, I mean, in, you know, general, I would say, an element of a general plan is intended to be about a 20-year plan. With sea level rise, I think we're going to have, you know, periodic updates. I think we're going to continue to learn more, advance our understanding, have more information about what's actually happening on the ground. And so I anticipate that component of this to be updated more frequently. In terms of picking a scenario, we have, and I'll send some resources out to the commission. You know, they're already available on our website, but we've had this conversation many times before. It really depends on the asset you're talking about. If we were thinking about citing a new hospital, we would want to use the highest projection available. available, because that's a critical facility, and we wanna make certain that we've taken into consideration projections that are as aggressive as possible, and making sure that that investment is there when we have critical need for it. When it comes to citing a, a park, we can use a much lower threshold, because parks are highly resilient. When it comes to, you know, citing, you know, other pieces of infrastructure, you know, we, we have to take them each on their own. So there's not a one-size-fits-all when it comes to the, the scenario type. What I will say is that we're currently looking at using the, the moderate-high scenario for some of the adaptation planning work that we're doing for the wastewater treatment plant. I, I don't wanna get too sidetracked now, but I have some, some concerns about the OPC guidance that we received on, on this, you know, on this, the, the planning scenarios. And just to hit it real quickly, it's because the science part of the document, if you look at what the science says, there's all kinds of caveats that the scientists put in around that scenario. But when you get to the planning recommendations, they recommend to use that anyway. And so we'll get into this in a lot more detail when we get into the sea level rise, you know, section, and we're, we're getting into those details. But I think we need to be cautious in our approach to, to using these projections that are too high, when we're, we're thinking about how we plan for our community. Projections that are too high cause us to make decisions to retreat much sooner than we need to, which loses valuable, you know, social and, and, and other infrastructure that we've already invested in. We would be telling people that your house is no longer, you know, a valuable asset much too soon. We would be kicking businesses out of that zone much too soon. We'd be losing, you know, access to, you know, you know, the marsh and, and all of these other assets far too soon if we jump the gun and use a projection that's too high. So I think we need to, you know, be really cautious in our approach there.
So your uneasiness is that the projections are too large? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, the projections have, my concern is that the projections have more uncertainty embedded in them when you look at the science behind them for the moderate-high and the high scenarios than they appear to have in the policy recommendations. And so we need to rightsize our approach to those. I'm not saying that there's a problem with the projection, I'm just saying that the, their, their application to policy needs to be considered very carefully.
One of the things we learned, too, was that sea level rise is not happening equally around the bay, that it's rising in Arcata and sinking at the south end of the bay, so that Arcata's decades behind in whatever that timeline is to hit a foot or two feet of sea level rise from other parts of the bay, which is interesting. Okay, Dan?
Yep.
Please.
I will say that it's inspiring to receive this document after years and years of discussion. I wish, wish Judith Mayer was around, because she's been asking for it, she's been begging to see it for a long time. So I hope she recognizes that it's been produced, and it's, it's just a nice read. It's nice to see all the zoning work and everything get dovetailed into the local coastal plan. I do have one very small question, though, and it's 4.1.6, and it's a bit of a digression. And I, I know that we've discussed this in the zoning of that area before, and I just can't recall exactly what vacant parcels that are being referred to here for recreational use. And if you could just clarify that, it would help.
Somewhere within the Gateway zoning district, I just don't recall the parcels. And I couldn't get them from this.
Isn't that where the homeless RV?
Yeah, this is, this is basically in, in the Beryl District, in the heart of the Beryl District.
Kind of the northern edge of it, like Schmidt-Bauer property back in there?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, here, let me pull this up. See my fancy animation all over again? There we go. So basically, it's saying north of Samoa, that's this line here, west of K Street, that's this line here, and south of 10th Street, which is, you know, in here, right there. So it's basically identifying, you know, this area here. It's kinda funny, because part of it's outside the coastal zone. Let's see, this is 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th. Yeah, part of it's outside the coastal zone, but that's okay. So it's, it's really, it's just identifying that, you know, the area that we've identified as part of the Gateway area.
So the description here is that there'll be recreational use in facilities shall be developed in this area consistent with applicable land use policies. So I don't recall. Does that mean a park or some kind of public space, or?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, all of the, you know, publicly accessible private open space, the trail on L Street, all of those things would qualify for, for this. I think it was really just trying to identify, you know, the, the paucity of recreational facilities in this neighborhood, and recognizing there's a lot of redeevable, redevelopment potential in that area. So I think this, this really aligns with the policies that we adopted in the Gateway Area Plan.
David, while you're there, can we look at 12.2.2? I, I just wanna make one additional point.
This is a big one.
Agricultural practices can include spraying of herbicides. Do we really wanna say that? I, I just, I just bring that up. Do we wanna allow herbicides in the coastal zone?
To my knowledge, we cannot prohibit the use of herbicides. That's not within our land use authority?
No?
No. And I, I can confirm that with our, with our legal counsel, but the, the purpose of this statement, or the purpose of this policy, is to recognize that agricultural practices can include, you know, practices that may not be compatible with residential development. And so, you know, or other types of development, and so, you know, the idea here is to try and have a policy that, that addresses that and recognizes that you may need setbacks and buffers and that kind of thing. Many agricultural practices are, are pretty industrial, when it comes right down to it. We don't have a whole lot of those in, in the city of Arcata, but, you know, but animals make noise. We've received complaints in the past from animals making noise.
The cheese factory, the goat cheese people, that was a big one on this level. This was the discussion, and it was permitted for that ag property, even though it's essentially an industrial process there.
Anything else down here? Then let us, is it, how does everyone feel about hitting the pause button here on this review? Everyone has a chance to read this more, and in advance of our next meeting, we all have a list of items that we think chapters, as opposed to jumping back and forth throughout the document as we go through everyone's list? Does everyone feel like that is a workable solution? And, and if so, how far ahead of the meeting would you need to get those in order for that to be effective in the way that we hope it is?
Were we going to consider the community benefits program at our next meeting? I thought that was the plan.
Yeah, we'll probably have both of these topics on for your next meeting.
Then we're not gonna get very far on this one, probably.
I take your point, but the exercise of submitting all of those and having that list organized is still useful, even if we only begin it, just because whenever we do, we'll be able to take chapters, and everyone's concerned about that chapter. I'm not attached to that, I'm just trying to get a sense of whether commissioners think it would be better to approach it that way and submit discussion items ahead of time, or not. The only downside that I can see, perhaps, is that if we don't do that, it provides people more time. You could be reviewing and choosing items all the way up until right before the meeting starts, so it gives you a little more runway to look at things.
I think the email.
Reminding all of us, and also notifying the two commissioners that are not here this evening?
Absolutely.
That this is the new plan, and just, I wanna make sure everyone feels good about this, who's here this evening.
So submit the emails by April 2nd, is what I just heard?
Correct. Yeah, you would have to submit your comments to me by April 2nd to get them in the packet.
Yeah, and this is specifically on the, the previous topic, not?
Both. It would be community benefits and LCP.
Are we going to triage and just do a section of this?
Yeah, I would suggest, given that we will not get to the other chapters on time, and just so that we can review with depth, doing chapters one through six.
Yeah.
Or sections one through six.
An added benefit of having everyone's comments ahead of time is we'll be able to take all the comments on chapter one and look at them as a group, because it's likely that we'll all hit on some of the same things. And I think it'll, the object here is just to make our review time together more efficient. Sound good? So I don't think it has to be a full-on book report, but it's like, these are the items that I want to discuss, and a simple list. David, are you in alignment with that, as far as the level of specificity that the email should contain?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a sufficient starting point. When you did this before, you kinda made at least a couple of sentences about a change and why you wanted to make it. So that might be helpful, if you can, you know, jot a few things down as to, you know, where you're going with it.
Right. Why you wanted to discuss the item.
Yeah.
Sound good? Given that, I think we will move on from this item.
There is one person online, if you wanna accept public comment before you close.
Absolutely. Let's take public comment. Thank you for letting me know someone's there.
I guess they're just here to watch. They're not raising their hand.
Okay, great. Not seeing any public comment online, and no one here in the gallery, that will conclude our business items this evening, and we will move on to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from any Planning Commission members? Staff? Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.